Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of the Lowell School Committee to order. Please join me in honoring America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Laraba.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mia Millenazzo.
Here.
Seven yays, approved.
Again, good evening, just to let our viewing audience know, it's about fifty degrees here in the chamber this evening, so if some of us look like we're shivering, it's because we are.[58.10][58.10](Laughter). Again, good evening and welcome, first order or special order of business, we, I don't believe have any items under special order this evening. Moving right down the agenda, regular school committee meeting minutes of December 1st, 2010. Does anyone have any corrections, comments? Hearing none, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy to accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Pose the vote. Permission to enter? We don't have any permission to enter this evening. Under memorials, committee as a whole, I would ask my colleagues to rise in a moment of silence and dock in chambers for the following. Minnie Vitale, mother-in-law of Robinson Schoolteacher Robert Brown. Edward Zanuski, uncle of Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy and daily schoolteacher Patricia Myers. Patrick J. McCarthy, a member of a prominent Lowell family. And if my colleagues would allow me, I'd like to add to this list Mayor Tassi-Poulias, former Mayor Tassi-Poulias who passed away the other day. He was a four-time member of the Lowell City Council and he was also obviously a former mayor and chairman of the school committee, so I'd like to add Mayor Poulias as well. So if we could all rise in a moment of silence and dock in chambers. Thank you, may they rest in peace. I apologize, yes, I apologize, there is some information under permission to enter, so if my colleagues allow, we'll go back on the agenda and I will recognize Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hamilton Transportation Corp., Inc., for the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars to provide round-trip transportation for one special education student from Bay Cove Academy in Brookline, Mass. to Jermaine Lawrence Group Home in Arlington, Mass. Funding provided by Lowell School Department Special Education Transportation Budget. Assistant Medical Transportation Specialist for the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to provide round-trip transportation for homeless students from their temporary Lowell residence to the various schools in Lawrence, Mass. Funding provided by the Lowell School Department Transportation Budget. Lynda Lee for the amount of forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents to serve as the principal of the Shawnee Elementary School for the 2010-11 school year. The principal shall be paid a salary of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents from August 16th, 2010 through December 31st, 2010, and a salary of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents from January 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2011. Payable in equal installments in accordance with the policy of the school committee. Funding provided by the FY 11 local operating budget. Principal salary in line item. That's all, Your Honor.
Any questions on the items under permission to enter? Hearing none, motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Laraba. Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. Under our new agenda, we did have an additional memorial for Richard J. Kiernan, senior husband of Mary Kiernan, retired Lowell Public School payroll supervisor. May Mr. Kiernan rest in peace, thank you. Unfinished business, public participation, motions, first motion by Mr. Conway to request the committee review the minutes of the previous school committee meeting in order to make corrections and as prior to the next meeting, committee members follow those changes to the recorder by Thursday before the regularly scheduled meeting in order to allow time for preparation for the committee packet on Friday. Second? Second by Mr. Leary. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mia. I think the motion basically speaks for itself and I think it's just an opportunity to, especially going forward, we're going to be, we're going to be dealing with many complicated issues and I think we need to streamline things as much as possible and I think this will make the process more effective. Thank you, Mr. Mia.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Ms. Laraba?
Just a clarification, Your Honor. I certainly have been working on some changes back and forth online, but I was under the impression that we couldn't make substantive changes that way, it had to come before the entire body, so if there was a vote or a line item that was different, we couldn't make that change via email, is that correct?
Again, I don't think we can make substantive changes, I think if there are edits or typographical errors, we could certainly do that, but I think you're correct. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no problem with looking at a more efficient way to review the minutes. My concern is just the timing. Typically, we get the minutes the Friday before the meeting, so this would mean getting the minutes the week before that, is that going to be, how are we going to get the minutes back to the recorder, is that going to be electronically? Because typically, we get the minutes hard copy with our packet the Friday before the meeting.
Right.
I'm just, you know, how would we make the logistics work?
The mechanics of this, right.
And then are we going to have to have our school runner, you know, driving to our houses, one more trip to get it to us on Thursday, and how do we get it back? That's really where I'm, I have concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. If I could make a recommendation, if we were to receive them electronically with a, you know, with draft written right on them, so that it wasn't an official communication, it was just the draft copy that was being forwarded to us electronically, I think that would cut down the time, we should be able to, and I'd ask the secretary, if that would be doable, that we'd be able to get them, you know, by that Thursday's the time or...
Okay. With that understanding, is that for the maker of the motion? Okay.
It's fine with me.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose the vote, thank you. Next motion by Mr. Leahy, request an update on the heating systems across the district, especially Lowell High School.[471.12][471.12](Laughter) And City Hall. Second by Ms. Martin. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I think I will amend it to have City Hall, the heating system checked here, but motion basically speaks for itself, if we could just get an update tomorrow, or sometime next week, on the heating systems across the district and just to make sure that they're, the concerns are being addressed, especially at the high school, City Hall, and any other school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye. Pose the vote. Next item on the subcommittee, the first subcommittee, Lowell High School Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of the Meeting of Tuesday, December 7th. Chair recognizes, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Lowell High School Subcommittee did meet on December 7th at 7:00 PM. Present were myself and Subcommittee Members Dave Conway, Allison Laraba. Other committees, committee members also present were John Leahy, James Leary, and Connie Martin. From central office, we had Dr. Scott, Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco, and from LHS, we had the Headmaster Edward Rose Merrick and Dr. Wendy Jack. The first item on the agenda was an update on the AP testing, as my colleague Ms. Leahy had had a motion on that regard. So what we did was, we looked at the new data we had on AP test scores, that for those students who had taken the test in spring of 2010. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about some of the outcomes of the AP test. It seemed that statistics is still a major concern. We had 4.8 percent of the students who took the statistics test scored a Level IV or V, which is the score that most selective colleges want to see, at least a IV or V on the test. So to have only 4.8 percent reach that mark, there was some concern about what needs, what changes need to be made to the program, and discussion about how more students are getting into AP classrooms and maybe that's had an impact on the percentage of students reaching that IV or V score. So basically, we will continue to follow this data. The high school is making some changes based on the data. They are going to be offering an honors level statistic course, that was one suggestion the high school had, for those students who really were not up to the AP level course, to try to meet those needs that way. The second item on the agenda was an update on the Latin Lyceum, and I think it's important to stress that the whole approach of looking at the lyceum, I've had people come up to me and say, "You're trying to get rid of that program," and it's absolutely not about that, and I know my colleagues would confer, we're looking at strengthening the program. It's been around, I think this is its 11th year now, and just kind of taking a look, and I know one of the issues that comes up is the attrition rate, the number of students that don't continue through for the whole four years, and there's a multitude of reasons for that, which we discussed. Another issue is the course waiting, and, you know, is an honors course the same for a lyceum as it is for a non-lyceum student? And there's mixed feelings about that, but the high school is looking very closely at these issues. They also had a number of recommendations about how to do more and better outreach at the middle schools, in terms of communicating the opportunity to students, and I think it also behooves us to look at the rigor of the K-8 education, that some of our high achieving students perhaps are not being challenged as much as when they get into the high school. Some of the other issues we talked about was supports and preparation for the students who are in the lyceum, but again, the whole motivation is to strengthen the program, I'd like to see it grow, you know, expand it as an academy, and so there were a number of issues talked about in regards to that, which are in your minutes. The next item was the feedback from the eighth grade parent visit to Lowell High, and it's, I've been to those orientation meetings, they're, you know, very successful, but this year, the high school actually conducted its own little informal survey with parents and students who were there, and they had very positive feedback about how, you know, especially parents who were maybe on the fence about whether they wanted to send their student to Lowell High. After spending an evening there and seeing the facilities, talking to teachers and students, they came away much more comfortable about the high school recognizing the many diverse opportunities that are there for students, so it was basically a good news story. We also discussed the new anti-bullying curriculum that goes in line with the state new legislation around anti-bullying, and the high school has developed a fantastic approach to this. They're getting the students involved in not only creating these videos with Lowell Educational TV, Channel 22, which is at the high school, but also training student leaders to go around during the morning advisory period, show the video, and then lead a discussion. And so this is really going to bring the issue much more to the forefront, and, you know, as we know, when you're talking to teens, they're going to listen more closely to a peer than another adult telling them what to do and this and that. So that was also very positive. I don't think there were any specific motions that are jumping out to me, other than to submit this as a report of progress to the committee.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you very much. I, what I wanted to add for the, for the lyceum meeting was, with the motion that I had made is, and it was a good discussion that night, we wanted to basically just take a look at the program, and as we said, strengthen it, improve it, and make sure we're, that the program's growing. So we didn't, my concern at the meeting, we had a good discussion on it, was there are still a handful of students that want to be in the lyceum program, their parents want them to be in there for the rigor, and the student would like to be in there. So some of the, what we had talked about too, is maybe more outreach to the middle school, and maybe the guidance councils of the teachers can be giving some more information to these students, probably when they're in sixth grade or seventh grade. So when it comes up to the eighth grade and they want to be in the lyceum, and they can't figure out, you know, well, it's too late to do the work to get in, basically. So we need to have an outreach, more outreach to these students that want to be in the lyceum program, because that was the main concern I had from a handful of parents, is that, you know, they really wanted to be at Lowell High School. So that was a good discussion at the meeting, and then I guess the other point that we talked about too, is just as a school district, to really promote the lyceum to colleges and to the community, to let them know how strong we feel about the lyceum and how strong a program it is, and what the benefits are, so that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Mr. Conway?
Yes, just very briefly, Mr. Mia, I want to, I want to congratulate the Headmaster and his staff in putting together that survey. I know a number of parents have mentioned that, that they thought that that was an excellent tool to find out what their thoughts were, because, you know, in a meeting like that, obviously, everyone can't be heard, and with this survey, it gave, it gave the parents that opportunity to come forward. I've been in a number of these meetings before, and I don't know why we didn't do that, because I think that is a great idea, and going forward, I hope it continues. Survey was very simple, I believe it only had five or six questions, but I think they were to the point, and I think there was certainly a comfort level that the parents had, and also it showed, I think it showed the parents that the high school, the administration and the staff want the parents to be part of that whole process. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the high school Subcommittee Report? Hearing none, motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Conway to accept the reporter's report of progress on all agenda items with the knowledge that the work will continue. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose the vote. Thank you. Next item, Special Education Student Support Services Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of the Meeting of Tuesday, December 14th. The Chair recognizes, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. We did meet last night, and present were myself and other Subcommittee Members John Leahy and Connie Martin, as well as School Committee Members Dave Conway and Jim Leary. From the School Department, we had Superintendent Scott, Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy, Headmaster Ed Rose Merrick, and Roxanne Howe, Discipline Operations Manager for the high school. In addition, we had Coordinator of the Malloy School Kathy Keane, David Cook, who's a teacher at the Cardinal O'Connell School, and Ann Brady, a Behavior Specialist at the Malloy School. We had three items on the agenda. The first one had to do with student conduct on school buses, in particular, our policy. We were presented with a proposal to expand the language in our school bus policy, and basically, by expand, I mean, provide language that's consistent with the discipline guidelines that currently exist in our parent and student handbooks, specifically around what is appropriate behavior on the bus and what are consequences for behavior that is not appropriate on the bus, to just clearly spell that out in writing for our students and our families. So we, we looked, and I believe you all would have those changes in front of you, so we looked at the changes, and there was a motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin, to recommend approval of the revised school committee policy regarding student conduct on school buses, and that passed three to zero. I don't know if you want to take that up separately?
Why don't we do that? Sure. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy to accept the recommended changes to the revised school committee policy, J. 1 CC-R, student conduct on school buses. Any questions? Ms. Laraba? Oh, roll call. Do you have a question? I'm sorry. Oh, no, we, yeah, sorry. Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba. Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. The second item on the agenda regarded the alternative schools update. I had a motion, as well as my colleagues, Mr. Leahy and Mr. Conway, asking for update on what was happening with the alternative schools. And we had lengthy discussion about some significant changes, specifically at the Malloy School, and I guess the most significant change at the Malloy School was a reduction in the number of students there. The enrollment number for June of 2010 was 159 students, although we discussed how that number might include some returned students. It wasn't necessarily an accurate 159, but the number of students who are there now is considered accurate, and that's at 55. So even if we look at it that perhaps there were 100 students there in June of 2010, we have pretty much reduced the student, the number of students at the Malloy School by 50 percent. And there was quite a lengthy discussion about some concerns about that in terms of such a significant change in the student population at a school, really without our involvement at all, that, you know, there was some concern that we would have preferred to have known about that sooner, rather than months after it had happened, and some concerns about the process in determining which students would be moved either over to the high school or pushed out into some other program. But as the discussion evolved, I would say that the majority, if not 100 percent, of the Subcommittee felt that going forward, our focus really needed to be on what happened to those students, that the high school couldn't give us an exact number, I mean, we're thinking 21, it might be 30, that ended up over there, we don't know what happened to the other ones. So we have requested additional information in terms of the students that were moved out of the Malloy School, and what is their status right now? Where are they? How are they, if they're at the high school, how are they doing at the high school? And we will be getting that report, it is expected within the second week of January. I believe we're going to have another Student Support Services Subcommittee to review this additional data, because that really is what the heart of it is, is that, you know, we, in Lowell, we have, you know, many challenging issues that we face, as many districts across the state do, with not enough funding and, you know, the demographic challenges, but every student is important to us, and, you know, we want to keep on track with that. The other discussion about the alternative schools focused on where we go, what's our next step with them? Because as my colleagues may recall, during last year's budget cycle, we've recognized we're spending a great deal of money on our alternative school programs, and that we need to take a hard look at that, and that's really where the, you know, the superintendent, the focus was with this initial changes at the Malloy, and that, so we'll be getting updates, and I know a lot of what is planned is really contingent on getting access to some grant money that's out there for alternative education, and if we can access that funds, that's, that will have a lot to do with what we'll be able to do moving forward. So we'll be getting continual updates on that as the district gets more information about it. The third item, I don't know if I covered everything, but certainly my colleagues can ask any, you know, include anything. The third item, oh, do you have a question on this particular? Okay.
Thank you. I was actually just kind of looking for a little bit of clarification. The numbers for 2010, 2011 are for half-year, and the other years are full years, is that correct? Correct numbers? No?
Do you want me to answer? I mean, it was not my understanding that that was a half-year number, I believed it was for the 2010-2011 year.
Well, we're only halfway through 2010-2011.
I'm sorry.
If I can provide some clarification.
Right now.
The number for this year, the 55 students are the, it's the number of students that are presently there at the high school. Our difficulty was culling the information for the students for the past two years on a month-by-month basis, so if we were looking at the number of students in October 1st of the '08-'09 school year and '09-'10 school year, that information, we weren't able to pull from our data system. The numbers that are there indicate the number of students who came into the program throughout the year, and as Ms. Doherty said, some of the students could be double-counted, if they were at the school, they then transferred out, came back in, left the school system, re-enrolled, so there's some double-counting there.
I did realize that from reading the report, but, you know, I was looking at the 55 and even realizing it was for half the year that we're in right now. I just wondered if this just means that we're referring fewer students to the alternative school because we're handling their issues in how, you know, at the school that they're in? Is that a possible scenario?
I believe the coordinator reported last night that there are referrals that are coming in now, so the number is expected to increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Just to continue with the agenda?
Yes.
The third item we discussed was the non-membered students report we got from the high school, which was really looking at attendance and different interventions that have been in place to improve attendance and reduce our dropout rate, and we saw some really significant improvements in our numbers, and I just want to call attention to, on page two, table five of that document, we looked at the impact of police visits, where there are a number of interventions that happened before that, phone calls, trying to get parents in to meet with housemasters at the high school, things like that, but when you get to the point that you're, a policeman is coming to your door, what we saw was, it had, well, for the 2009-2010, 81 percent success rate of all those students who got visited by the police, 81 percent of them improved their attendance, began coming to school again. I mean, that was huge for us. But even in terms of looking at table four, just like generally putting all the interventions together, we've seen a significant drop in the number of non-membered students. Non-membered is a term that applies to many of our dropout students, they just start coming. And if you look at, from, the number for the 2007-2008 year was 284 students, the number for the 2009-2010 year was 147 students, so that's almost 50 percent less students. So that was very encouraging. We see that the, these interventions are working, and one of the points that came out in the discussion about this report, that the high school is looking at better ways of gathering the data so that it would be much more efficient for them. This is information the state is expecting us to report on. It's something, obviously, that we are interested in continuing to track, to make sure that we are keeping as many students in our schools as we can. So that would be my report, unless anybody has anything to add. Thank you.
Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. I was not able to attend last night's meeting, so first of all, looking at the report that Dr. Howe put together, very impressive numbers, as you said, especially talking about the impact of the police visits. One thing that I did wonder, and perhaps you did discuss this last night, in looking at the forms that she attached, there seems to be a lot of duplication in these forms. Are they looking to try to condense it and have one, you know, because you have an attendance review that asks some of the same questions as the call sheet, and I understand that the police visit is a different section altogether, but was there any conversation about trying to streamline that paperwork?
We didn't, we didn't specifically talk about...
The forms.
Streamlining forms. We talked about having consistent classification for things, and also working closely with our X2 people in terms of how we input the data consistently, but I would think, I mean, that sounds like a very good recommendation, that that might be what comes out of some of these discussions. Basically, it was going to be an ongoing issue, that the high school actually had a date planned, I don't know if it's later this week or the beginning of next week, I forget, to sit down with some of our X2 data people and look at this issue, so, I mean, that would make sense, to try to streamline the forms as well as some of these other pieces.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the Superintendent, could we just ask probably the Assistant Superintendent, just the update? We had a conversation about the computer system, if there was any more information on that?
Yes, the server.
Server, yeah.
We did follow up on that today. Assistant Superintendent Murphy?
Assistant Superintendent Murphy?
We spoke with the network manager at Lowell High School. And in fact, even though the Malloy School staff is not, the server that they use is the K-8 server and the server for the central office, they do have access to the high school server. It appears that there's, the issue is more around the training for staff and how to access those public folders that the department chairs put information on. So the network manager has been in touch with Kathy Keane, who's the coordinator of the Malloy School, and they're going to be doing some training for the staff at the Malloy so that they'll know how to access those public folders that are in the shared file for the high school.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Darity?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, I thought of this question after the meeting last night, so I apologize that I didn't ask it then. But through you to the superintendent, I was thinking afterwards about the case-by-case selection process of the students that were going to be moved out of the Malloy and back to the high school. And I was wondering if you know if the benchmarks on those students were looked at in terms of, were the teachers at the Malloy writing up benchmark assessments on those students? And was that part of the discussion regarding what students were going to be leaving the Malloy? Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
So I'm not exactly sure what classifies in your mind as a benchmark, but I do know that their grades, their credit count was considered, how long they've been at the school, as well as their social, psychosocial issues, how they were being addressed, where they were being addressed, where, the best programming for that student. And there may have been some more issues discussed around a particular child. But really, the overarching question was, what's the most appropriate placement for all of the children, who, all the students who were attending the Malloy School? And from there, student conferences were held. But we can get further detail if you'd like.
Any other questions, comments? Motion by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Lariva, that the report of the Student Support Services Subcommittee be accepted as a report of progress. All in favor signify by saying aye. Puts the vote. Moving to the superintendent's portion of the agenda, the first item is the turnaround plan update. We do have in our packets a PowerPoint presentation, the slides of the PowerPoint presentation, and I'll turn the meeting over to Superintendent Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll ask Jim Leary to come up for technical support. You're there, okay? I don't know why this isn't working on this side. Maybe I'll get the turn. Okay, the purpose of the PowerPoint presentation this evening is just to go over the timeline of the process, the turnaround process and the redesign process for the committee. We've invited members of the redesign team from the Merklin School to come tonight to answer any specific questions after we give the PowerPoint presentation, go over the process. And then the blue binder in front of you is for informational purposes only. No action is being requested this evening. We will have into January to set up any meetings to discuss anything in the binder. Much of the binder has already been distributed to you, except for the last two tabs, which I'll go over as well. So the timeline of the redesign plan, so this, we met with our stakeholder group back in June of 2011, or, sorry, 2010, yeah, sorry, I got the first type wrong, 2010. And Jim Leary represented the school committee on the team. And in your binder, I have included the handout that was given to you many months ago with regards to the makeup of the stakeholder group by definition and the redesign team and what the difference between the two teams are. The July-August time period, oh, thank you, Mayor, we have our redesign team meets over the summer and worked very diligently to look at the data that we gathered, not only our academic data, but also we surveyed our parent community. And I believe we had over 100 parents who filled out surveys who came to the school. We surveyed staff, just really drilling down on what are the obstacles for our students at the Merklin School, keeping them from achieving an appropriate to high levels. In July 2010, I presented, I was presented with the stakeholder recommendations. In October 2010, we accepted these recommendations. October, the October, School Committee, October 6th meeting, the redesign plan was distributed to you in your packet. Jim came, the October 6th meeting, to answer again any questions about the turnaround plan, and the committee unanimously voted for the plan. We sent it into the commissioner. In November, the DESE came, members of the assistant commissioner and her team came, gave us feedback. School committee member Jackie Doherty was able to attend some of that. It was during the day, so many members weren't able to attend. We reconvened the stakeholder group and had a focus group, got feedback from them. The December 9th modifications to our turnaround plan and the suggestions that the commissioner and his team had for us, those are also included in your binder. Our response to those modifications are included in your binder as well. And January 17th, across the Commonwealth, all districts who have Level 4 schools, if there's any unions or school committees who have any issue at all with any component of the plan, can contact the commissioner and state their concern. Next slide. You'll notice the January 14th date is later than the January 17th date because the timeline keeps changing and bumping things out. So that timeline hasn't changed, but now isn't and does not coincide with the January 17th date. We will be submitting, so again, the turnaround plan that's in your binder is the foundation of the redesign team, what the redesign team is putting together for what they call the redesign plan. In February, Commissioner May, in consultation with myself, modified the turnaround plan. And another important document in your, in your binder that I'll go over with you, again, is the law that was passed last January with regards to school reform in the state and the parameters, and it's slightly different with regards to the authority of the superintendent, the accountability level associated with that, as well as the principal of the school to turn it around. And in spring 2011, they will accept or reject our plan. So this is the role of the Merklin team. So they deserve much of the credit, obviously, for putting together this plan and continuing to work with the Merklin staff in their entirety. And this presentation is your very first tab in your binder, so that you have it. Representation, the recommendation, again, after the law was passed in January, the DESE put together regulations. So these are the regulations and guidelines put out by the DESE. Recommendation, that the redesign team is comprised of 50 percent school staff with union site leaders, district representation optional, and it's led by the principal. Were commitment, frequent meetings, ongoing engagement, and they're to build the redesign plan, provide oversight of the plan's implementation, evaluate the plans, really how effective it is, not just now going forward, but really as we look at what needs to be tweaked. If part of the plan isn't working for us, this team needs to reconvene and advise us on what needs to change within the plan and perhaps even affect our letter of side agreement with the union. Evaluate the plan's effectiveness. Revised plan implementation as needed. Expectations, use knowledge of past barriers and root causes of problems and to address those through redesign strategies and action steps. Redefine the vision of where to end up as a school. Build on the state turnaround plan to create an actionable plan through a database. And basically, we want everybody to participate. So not only just the redesign team, but all the teachers and all the educators in the And guide implementation of the redesign plan and make necessary adjustments. The use of data. And again, we're really taking the opportunity, the things, the issues that we address and learn at the Merklin Schools is really around best practices. And we're taking what we learn here, what we know here, to be best practices to our other schools. So we're using data in all of our schools as a driver for student achievement. But specifying grade analysis of performance, observational, perceptual data, data collection, research review, and deep causal analysis are required. Commitment to communicate the results of the analysis to others and apply new insights, revisions of the plan and/or its implementation. It's a very significant role of the redesign plan. So if you don't mind, I'll just walk you through your binders. And I know a committee member, Martin, had just a few questions previously with regards to the schedule of the school and why we have the experts here. It perhaps would be helpful if those issues could be addressed. I'll just take a seat and go over this from this mic. Okay, so again, the first tab is the presentation this evening. The second tab really explains, and again, you've seen this material in your packets over the last year, but this is basically the important documents that are guiding this particular process. So the turnaround plan, how that sets and establishes the foundation for our redesign plan. The next tab is the description of the law that was passed last January. The difference, again, between the local stakeholder group and the redesign team. This is a copy of the turnaround plan that the committee voted on in October. The minutes of the meeting where the vote occurred. This is the recommendation of modifications that the commissioner wanted more detail on with regards to our plan. This is our response to the commissioner's request for modifications. So if I may, to the redesign team, so when we spoke, when I spoke earlier with the committee with regards to changes to our letter of side agreement, the question came up, we explained that we were increasing the day by 15 minutes, but I went on to say that we also recaptured other time during the day. And I wonder if Jason Nakar would like to take the mic and just speak to some of those changes to explain. And I believe the first table is table one.
Okay, so what was the question?
My initial question had been how time was recaptured in the day if nothing else was lost. But as I look at the report that I received as I sat down tonight, it says very clearly freeing teachers from recess duty. So something did have to go away for new time to be found. I think that's great that you've been able to build a schedule like that. It was just difficult to understand how time could be found when nothing else was going on during that time. So it was great to get this information and be able to see in black and white exactly what the answer to the question was. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions at this particular point? Mr. Leary?
Some are pretty elementary questions, but just to go over the basics for the public at large, what we've done already is submitted a plan or a draft plan, I guess, to the state. And the state has had feedback back to our administration directly with modifications. I haven't read this whole document, but I guess what we're doing now is preparing another, the final plan that will be submitted at the end of the month of January. And we anticipate at that point, there'll be additional dialogue from the state in terms of direct modifications, if there is any. So they'll, when they say modifications, my question is, do they just tell you what they want changed and we change it? Or is there a verbal dialogue of why we're doing what we're doing in a discussion?
Right. At this point in time, the changes, the modifications that are in front of us that we have addressed, we think are, have concluded this part of the process. And they will guide how we write up the redesign plan itself. Again, this evening is for informational purposes only. If there's any further questions, at another time, we can set up a meeting to discuss. But as we go forward, basically, at this point, we feel we have fully addressed their modifications.
So they, just a quick question to tail, and I'll end it. So we're going to put our final plan in sometime middle of January.
Right.
There's also financial reward for the plan as well, correct? Just for the public, I guess what gets confusing is we talk about it in subcommittee, we talk about it at the Merklin School, but just for the public at large, the final plan, once it's implemented, we're on a, we're competing with other school districts for additional funds for our schools. Just a brief, if you could, for the public at large, just kind of a brief, what does that mean?
Right. Well, the turnaround plan, the bridge money, the plan that you voted on in October, and we've submitted, and they've asked us to make modifications, they've already approved the bridge money, that's already done, and it was a very small amount compared to the $500,000 that we stand to win if we win these competitions starting July 1.
Just so we can get the numbers, so the first year, which was much smaller, what was that amount, 100 and?
135, yeah.
And then the, basically, what we're looking to compete for would be $250,000 for the next two years.
500,000 for July 1, and that's 500,000 each year for three.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Leary?
Just, and I guess, and again, it's, so we'll have the plan at the end of January. I know the dates are going to move all the time. So you anticipate hearing back from them in February regarding our plan approving it or asking for slight modifications, or will it be further in the road?
We think it's going to be later in the spring, and it's my understanding that no further modifications will be asked of us. It's either a yes, we have won the competition or not. The modification round is what's in front of you right now. We've addressed, you know, we've looked at what their issues were, we've addressed it in the plan. The plan reflects those changes. Once you submit your redesign plan, it's my understanding, not having gone through this process before, but that the Department of Ed is putting together a team of professionals who will evaluate the plans.
Okay. So if we don't win the monies, does that affect the implementation of our plan?
And we're hoping it won't to the extent, and that's covered off in one of the modifications of how can we, how will we serve this school if in fact, we don't receive the monies? And part of our disclaimer in the grant application is that we will rely more heavily on race-to-the-top monies wherever possible with regards to building capacity in the school, and that we're not sure really at this point how much, you know, other places that we can rely on given our difficult financial time.
No, and I, just a quick comment, and I know it's all brand-new to everybody, but it's, I can't think of the right adjective. It's a bit, I don't know, difficult to say that they, that changes need to be made, and some of those changes cost dollars. And we're competing with other people who have similar needs. One would opine that they would be giving everybody the money so they can meet these challenges. Initially, when this change of ed reform came about, it was, I think, in the words of the state rep from Brighton, it was to have deep disruption of what was going on at these schools so we could be effective. It sounds like now it's just a big competition, and if you don't win, everybody else is kind of looking into the outdoor, and all the places where these schools exist have serious significant financial issues next year. I mean, it's not even funny. It's just almost bizarre. They have this money, they play a game with, who's the best? Well, if you're second best, you're almost the best. Well, enjoy your next year, you're not going to get support. And not, nothing you can do about that, but I think it's something we have to touch base with the delegation regarding this because it's just, they're really helping us write the plan at the end of the day. So someone's going to be a little bit better than the next person, and everybody else is going to be out, you know, looking through the glass at a lousy $250,000. And as we lay off teachers in every other school, we're going to have to probably come up with monies to implement the plan despite whatever type of, you know, waiver we're trying to get out of on it. I don't know, it's a bit frustrating, and I won't editorialize anymore, but it's, and it's not anybody's fault here in the district, it's just, pick an adjective, it just doesn't seem right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lariva?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to recognize the amount of work that has gone into this and the amount of work that the redesign team has put into the plan, to thank them for that, to thank the administration for their leadership. To thank them for that, to thank the administration for their leadership in going through this and working with the state to try to present the best possible plan, possible to win those funds, but more importantly, to turn the Merklin around. So, I thank you very much for all that work, and please pass it on to your team members.
I will. Thank you very much.
Well put. Ms. Martin?
So, with the deadline then being mid-January that this gets submitted, could we, I'm sorry, at which point we have to vote on it officially, is this mid-January timeframe, right, before it gets finally submitted? The committee has to approve it before it gets finally submitted to Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed?
I'll ask for a point of clarification on that. Does the redesign, I know the turnaround plan needed a vote, but I haven't been told that the redesign team, sorry, that the redesign team's design needs to be. Do you know?
I know there's some specific points mentioned in your plan that we need to vote on, such as the change to policy to the preschool. I don't know if there's anything else buried in here that I'm not aware of, but.
And just with regards, no, I don't know of any vote either, but we'll follow up. The department's coming on Friday, their rep, so we'll just ask if another vote is required.
Well, you won't be able to make your change to policy unless you have a vote.
But just on that particular point, so.
Maybe that's, I don't know if there's another one. As I said, that's just number one in terms of their recommendations.
Right.
I haven't gotten past number one.
Right, sure. Well, just on that one point, when I followed up on that with Assistant Superintendent Murphy, the district doesn't have a policy per se with regards to that particular issue, but we do have a DSEG order in place. So, our response back to the commissioner is that we will be sensitive to the fact that, yes, children from the acre, but we also need to be in compliance with the DSEG order. So, there wasn't any specific policy in place.
I'm just referencing our response, which states at an upcoming meeting of the Lowell School Committee, the superintendent will request that the committee move to adopt the policy change recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, I'm just reading this.
Right.
If you're telling me that you've made the determination that you don't need a change of policy because no policy exists, and you think you can get around having us vote on it, I mean, it's your purview to try that, but I mean, it doesn't seem like it'd be a particularly contentious issue. Why wouldn't you just bring it to us to vote?
It's not, but again, the issue is, when I looked into it further, my understanding is that there's not a formal policy in place to change. That was the whole issue. Assistant Superintendent Murphy, did you wanna expand on that?
I don't think this is. I would just, if we could, recommend that perhaps we be able to have some time with the document. And then, I would recommend that the, whether it's curriculum instruction or any other subcommittee that may be interested in this topic, have an opportunity to discuss it. I mean, be able to look at, there's no budget attached.
That's the purpose.
Is that the purpose? So, that's gonna happen before we submit the final?
Right.
That's the thought behind this, that we're gonna have an opportunity to read through and respond?
Right. Again, tonight's informational purposes, I want the committee to have time with this document, to set up a meeting. If there's any questions that people would like discussed, it would be, we need to do it within thirty days, so by the middle of January, we need to have this discussion so that if there are any issues that the committee or the union has, that's the period of time dictated by the regulations.
Okay.
Ms. Lariva, did you have a question? No? Okay, thank you. So, it's my understanding we're taking this this evening for informational purposes, no official action that needs to be taken by the school committee this evening?
That's correct. No official action is for information purposes only. And if there are any questions, we need to set up another meeting in January.
Okay. So, we'll accept the report, the report of progress by the superintendent, by Ms. Darty, second by Ms. Lariva. All in favor, signify by saying aye. We'll, again, review the document, and if anybody has any question, comments, we'll probably follow through with Ms. Martin's suggestion that either go to a subcommittee or back to the committee as a whole. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the report on the Lowell Public Schools' review of district systems and practicing addressing the differential, differentiated needs of English-language learners. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. And this, I thank Deputy Superintendent Franco for this report. So, the Center of District School Accountability in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has undertaken a series of reviews of school districts to determine how well district systems and practices support groups of students for whom an achievement gap exists. The view is, the review is part of the DESE's program to recognize schools as distinguished schools under Section 1117B of the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which allows states to use Title I funds to reward schools that significantly close the achievement gap. DESE has identified thirty-six Title I schools in fourteen districts where the performances of students with a limited English proficiency exceeded expectations. Eight of those identified schools were Lowell schools, were Lowell schools. The site visit to the Lowell Public Schools was conducted on May eighteenth, twentieth, twenty-fourth to twenty-six, two thousand and ten. The visit occurred in the following district schools, the Abraham Lincoln BF Butler Middle, Dr. Onweng Middle School, James Daley Middle School, La Shaughnessy, Stocklosa, the Washington. All of these schools were identified as gap closers for their limited English proficient students. The view, the review focused on how district schools and practices affect each of four groups of students, students with disabilities, English-language learners, low-income students, and students who are members of racial minorities. Spring two thousand and ten reviews aim to identify schools and school factors contributing to relatively high growth for limited English proficient student performance in selected schools to provide recommendations for improvement on district and school levels to maintain or accelerate the growth in student achievement and to promote dissemination of promising practices among Massachusetts public schools. To focus the analysis, the review explored five areas, leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction assessment, human resources and professional development, and student support. The reviews were designed to identify systems and practices that are most likely to be contributing to positive results, as well as those that may be impeding rapid improvement. Systems and practices that are likely to be attributing to positive results were identified from the DESE's district standards and indicators and from a draft report in the English Language Arts Learners Subcommittee, Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education's Committee on the proficiency gap. Reviews were evidence-based and data-driven. Four to eighteen members previewed selected documents and the DESE data, and reports before a two-day site visit in the district and a two-day site visit to schools were conducted. The teams consisted of independent consultants with expertise in each of the five areas listed above, as well as English-language learners. In order to present the findings, we've attached chair and executive summary of the report. Any questions, Your Honor?
Ms. Lariva?
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for the summary. It was a lot of material to go through. And I do have a couple of questions. One of the things, especially on the page one of the summary, was talking about the narrow focus of instructional techniques may truncate the development of student leaders. And I'm wondering how we're gonna address that, but also, in the report itself, when they were talking about the differences in the teachers engaging the students, that to me also seems that we're gonna need to work some more with teachers to make sure that we're being consistent across from that. But I'm just wondering if we have a plan in place to do that development, a leadership development, because it was also mentioned, sorry. Further on in the, I don't have the exact, exact page number, but I thought it was interesting to read that and then have them notate that professional development is one of our strengths. So, apparently, our professional development for our teachers, they consider very strong, but we need to work on it for the administration level, the principals. Is that a fair reading of it?
Yes. Did you want? The executive summary attempts to bring out the salient points. I want your report to be as honest as the report is itself, but what they're trying to point out is the professional development is excellent, and the EQA report that we had before this, we got a commendable, which is a rare commodity. You don't really get below, you know, an excellent report in those kind of reviews. However, it is the implementation in the classroom. So, we conduct incredible professional development, so it comes into the supervision evaluation. And if you look at the recommendations, which I took the recommendations and then put district steps that we should follow, we're going to look at connecting. Leadership for principals will have to be the jump-off of what we're doing in professional development. We've been doing that quite a bit. Last month, for instance, we had a presentation by the study skills person we have working in middle school presented directly to principals. Next month, the person who is the writer of the Common Core, the Core Standards, is coming to present to all of our leaders. So, for us to look at professional development in a smaller focus, to make sure our leaders and our teachers are, the leadership is in tandem with the practitioners, is really what we're looking at as a system, and looking at planning professional development as a coordinated team. Unfortunately, in this review, things that we've been working on for a long time came through. Special education children who are also limited English proficient children, what do we need to do? What are the strategies? So, how are we going to make sure that the key strategies and the support for those children are really optimized? So, that's gonna take us working with teachers and administrators all together to make sure, whatever you do in PG. That's why the richness of the professional development time that we have been awarded by the school committee has been really incredible. And next month, for instance, it's going to be Common Core, after the principals have had it and the coaches. So, it's really systematizing all of the pieces. Unfortunately, for a person who's worked in the field of bilingual education for a really long time, these keys of presenting and making sure it gets to the hands in the classrooms is really challenging. The good news is, is that we had some wonderful feedback on language and literacy and the support for that. Also, children being treated respectfully, those are some really good points, but the outcomes for special education, limited English proficient children have to be looked at in a way that is really targeted. And we take that very seriously, but we have to do a much better job. And those recommendations are things we should just report on all the time. It has to be from all levels. So, we do a lot of PG because we're mandated to do a lot of PG, but we have to target it for outcomes. And so, that's what we're trying to do as a system. So, thank you.
And I'm sorry, can you explain shelter instruction for me? That's not.
Yes. In the field of English language, there, for the children who are brand-new to the country, there's what you call English language development. It's really getting to know basic English. Sheltered instruction is when a child gets into more advanced stages, and you're presenting social studies. So, you have to do something that makes that come alive because the vocabulary is very high. They may or may not know it. So, sheltering means to make that content come alive by the use of visuals, many strategies that we see in our classrooms all the time. So, sheltering is a piece of language development, but it is at a higher stage to make sure that high-level content is understandable to children.
All right. And then, one of the other points in terms of outreach to the parents, and as somebody who's been involved with PTO for many years, I certainly understand how difficult that is. I mean, we tried many different ways to reach out to parents and try to pull them into the school and get some involvement. The sentence that concerned me was just that we did not use all the tools available to us. And that's something that I'd like to make sure that we are jumping on, because, you know, especially when I was in the middle school, I was forever saying, let's use the internet, let's use the connected, let's, you know, send out the flyers, let's work with the kids so that they understand, you know, what's going on and try to get that information out to the parents. You know, if we had been a wealthier PTO, we were gonna, we were gonna try to buy one of the boards for outside the building for people when they're dropping kids on and off. But I'd like to just get an insurance that that's something that we're gonna get all schools on board with in utilizing those things, because my understanding is every school has access to a website. And I understand not all of our kids have computers at home, but I'm just trying to make sure that if we have those tools, we are using, you know, what we have.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, the use of the website is beneficial to some of our population, but not all. So, we really need to go back to having meetings in various languages. We're in a great and amazing time in Lowell. The Greenout School, I saw sixty children walk across the stage the other day with the sign, a sign of peace in different languages. It's not six languages like we used to have before, it's very varied. It's really an amazing time, like I said. So, in working with parents, there's going to be all kinds of subgroups. What we do for newcomer parents, we did go to a training, my staff, the Curriculum and Instruction Department of Education Annual Summit was a week ago. And there was a principal and a parent liaison from the Leahy School in Lawrence, and they talked about how they make parent involvement meaningful for all students. The parent involvement truly is, did you do your homework? So, we're going to go visit that principal, because we're trying to think there is diverse, if not more diverse than we are. And what they're talking about is, what do we expect from parents? And so, we've tried so many things in parental involvement, special days. We have meetings where we invite thousands of people and five people attend. And you know that, because you've been at those kind of meetings. However, we have to look at where the systems around us have incorporated diverse populations in really meaningful ways. So, I could come back when we learn more about that particular model, because what happens in Lawrence needs to happen in Lowell. And we're spending enough hours at work, so we're gonna look at models that have made a difference. And so, that's one of the recommendations. I can give you more of the details when we get more closely into it, but it's an important one.
Ms. Darty then, Mr. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just basically a comment. First of all, I think it's very cool that, you know, we are, again, being noticed for doing good work with our English-language learner students in particular. And I love that there was some incentive in terms of money involved for participating in the review. And again, I think that we saw a lot of good things were brought out in the assessment, and we also saw some areas where we could improve. And that's a learning curve for us, that's helpful. One thing that jumped out at me that hasn't been discussed yet was the point that Lowell has insufficient staff to provide ELL services in some schools, especially services for ELL students at higher proficiency levels. That's worrisome, because as we all know, we've been, you know, limiting, you know, eliminating staff, eliminating staff, and as we continue to face budget concerns, that does seem to be, you know, looming ahead of us even further that, and for them to notice that in this report, that, and I was wondering if we know specifically what schools they feel there is insufficient staff, if they've indicated to that level, and if there's any plan about how to deal with that. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
There isn't with regards to specific schools, but again, across the system, we do have many needs, this is one. And as we have more students coming into our system from other countries, we are, our newcomer classes are at capacity in many of our schools. And I'll defer to, to Franco, she has anything else?
Yes. In the review, we have maintained support in the schools that have the newest, we have support every place. And I would think one place that we've been concerned about overall but has been making gains is the Lincoln. The Lincoln makes gains, and their growth data is amazing, but the ESL staff, they do not have newcomer students, but they do have many diverse students. And it takes five to seven years for children to get at fluency like a native speaker. And so, when you look at a Lincoln school, the instruction's excellent, and the system of reading and literacy is building, the growth model, as we know, that the outcomes are fabulous. But if we look at ESL-certified staff per capita, we are, we haven't staffed it sufficiently because they aren't brand-new. And unfortunately, because we have so much need, we do focus and we do group the schools, like to these, what we called in the past, the ESL support schools, the specialty schools, because we haven't had the capacity to staff it. And that is one of the challenges with budget, as you look at the materials comments that are in this particular report. But as far as focusing, I mean, we do have recommendations. The recommendation that we are going to try to make, to get people more ready for the ESL pieces, extending the sheltered instruction, professional development, and. And it's challenging with the budget constraints, and we'll do the best we can.
Thank you. Mr. Leary, then Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Through these to the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, deputy superintendent. Excellent work. I think, you know, you guys have put a lot of effort into it, and the Lincoln School is a perfect example of success in that area. I just want to comment quickly on what my colleague Ms. Larva had articulated about online technology. You know, two years ago, we had, we just instituted a blog, you know, that, where we ran it out of the central administration with Ann Sheehy, that was pretty successful, had a lot of positive feedback. And we had budget cuts, so we had to like downgrade that, and we haven't had an update all year on it. Same thing was going on at the Bailey School, I think the Washington School, and I think to some extent the Sullivan Middle School had a lot of use of higher level of technology, more than just, you know, a picture of the school and a phone number and a fax number on the, and the name of the principal. I think it's, we have motions on floor by several different committee members. We need to get a technology subcommittee meeting set up. I think we need to do it in the first part of the year. We need to get the technology updated now. I know we're to have budget cuts, but this is stuff that's just ready to go. X2 is a pretty cool system. You know, teachers should have access in their rooms to it. Principals should have access so they can pull data off our students. I know it's a little bit off-topic, but we've got to get moving on it. Should have been done beginning of last year. I think we can do it, even with budget cuts, and I think it will have high value. And the expectations for folks that we've just been speaking, discussing, the expectations of you can get the information, so they have an expectation that at some point that they will be using a computer, whether they go to the library to do it or using at home, they'll have that availability. This is, you know, 2010, 2011's rapidly approaching. We need to do it, and we just find a way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask, on page five, they reference the evaluations of principals, and that, so is this, I just want to make sure my timing is right. So last year was the first year you used the LSAA administrative evaluation tool?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes. Before that, the district used goals as a measuring tool, so the principals set goals. I did the same with the principals the first year. It came to my attention last year that the state had an expectation that we, our evaluation tool itself reflects the various leadership components. We did have that for the LSAA, so we just adopted it and used that along with the goals for last year's evaluations, and we'll do it this year. But we are online, the state is, as I've mentioned to the committee in the past, is also looking at an evaluation tool, a new evaluation tool for administrators, is the same with teachers. So we're hoping to look at that tool and perhaps adopt that for all of our administrators as well. But in the meantime, the LSA tool that the district had in place actually met all of the criteria, and we use that now for the cabinet as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larva.
Thank you. On page ten of the report, there was conversation here about the science curriculum and social studies stating that we're fully developed, but we do not have adequate materials and resources. And I understand that the big part of that is the budget situation, but I'm also concerned the statement where the students are rarely asked to engage in concept formation and higher-order thinking, and that we are not showing evidence of good teaching in those subjects. So while I understand we have budget concerns and textbooks and everything else are hard to, that's concerned to me, and I realize that in the past few years, we've kind of shied away from that, but I'd like to know that we're going to try to address that.
Madam Superintendent?
We share your concern, and that definitely is a focus and has been for us. A few years ago now, a few budget cycles ago, our elementary schools had science teachers, and we had many more resources than we do now. And so when the science teachers were cut in many of our schools, professional development is required and materials for our classroom teachers to take over this initiative. And we agree with the report that we're not there, but it is our focus and continues to be. Did you want to?
Thank you. And just as a final note, I thought that they had a lot of good things to say about the district, and I give you congratulations for that, to you and your staff and all our teachers, because they certainly did make, by and large, I think, a more positive impression than a negative one. So I'm very impressed with that and very proud of the staff. So thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
I share your sentiment and also appreciate what committee member Dougherty said with regards to it being an educational professional development opportunity for us as professionals and the district. They make really good recommendations that I think we share the concerns, and it's just nice that somebody else is paying for these high-level people to come in and to give us a look and say, okay, this is how you can improve, you're doing this well. But again, the fact that we were able to receive such a report didn't happen overnight. It's literally years and years of work on the part of many, and this committee supported much of that work over the last decade.
Any other comments or questions on the report? Hearing none, motion by Ms. Larva, second by Ms. Dougherty, who accepted the report as a report of progress. All in favor signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Last item under the report of superintendent, the bullying prevention and intervention plan, which we all have in our packets.
Thank you, Your Honor. The report in front of you is the result of many months of work. The new law was passed in the state last winter, and each, although Lowell Public Schools was ahead of this particular issue in that all of our student handbooks cover much of what's included in this, so it looks like a repeat to some of you. And that's in large part because our DA, Jared Leone, gave us the legislation before it was passed, so we were able to have time with it and incorporate it, many of those things in our student handbook. But in late summer, the DESE put forward some regulations standardizing the process across the Commonwealth, and the plan in front of you is in compliance with those regulations. And the last step really involved in this particular process was last week when Assistant Superintendent Murphy held a public forum on any comment that our community had with regards to our plan. To date, we have had good feedback, and I didn't know Assistant Superintendent Murphy, if you wanted to add anything to the overview?
Yes. Chair recognizes Assistant Superintendent Murphy.
At the last meeting, I presented you with the draft of the form, and I have met with all of the principals and assistant principals, getting their feedback, working with the form, looking to see in terms of operationally how we're going to implement the various sections of this plan. We did have the community forum this past Monday, and we had some feedback. The plan has been posted on the website. And there have been some minor changes that I have made to the plan since the draft that you received, specifically on, reference to page nine, the section on taking disciplinary action. What we, after listening to lots of feedback, not only from the parents, but teachers and administrators, we, I took the language that was specifically written in the student handbook, the parent and student handbook, so that we had consistency across all of our documents. And so the language that I added in that section is taken right from a student, a parent and student handbook. That's one of the changes. And the only other change was that we added some of the research-based programs that we're using in the schools. We have added a couple of others. And so tonight, what we would need is your approval for this plan. Once we have your approval, I'll then submit it to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for their formal approval, and with that, we can begin implementing in January.
Any comments, questions, motion?
I would move approval.
Move approval by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Larva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Moving on, under new business memorandum of agreement, Lowell High School Club Advisors, I believe we were all provided a copy of a one-page memorandum of agreement. Madam Superintendent?
Your Honor, at this time, I believe we simply need a vote of the committee so that we can proceed.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? Mr. Leahy.
I just want to be, I mean, I'm glad we came up with the agreement and everything, but we have started the clubs at the high school, right? I mean, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Leahy, second by Mr. Conway, that the memorandum of agreement be approved as presented. Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Larva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Georges and UTL for agreeing to this memorandum. Thank you. Helping us out, thank you. Next item, next item under new business, permission to post media technology support liaison revised. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Unfortunately, we have to revisit this issue with regards to our media technology support liaisons, because we've been unable to fill the three positions. While many capable and interesting potential candidates have applied, they fail to possess the necessary degree requirements as outlined on the current job description. Many applicants possess, they basically possess a number of the industry-appropriate computer technology certificates, licenses, however, not the college degrees that we specify in the job description that the committee had voted upon. So I've modified the current job description to include a bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university preferred instead of required. I recommend, we request the school committee consider this. Thank you, Mr. Leary, for your assistance with this report.
Thank you. Ms. Larva. Motion to approve by Ms. Larva, second by Mr. Conway. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Larva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Under, I'm sorry, Ms. Larva.
Could I have a point of personal privilege to report out on some visits to other schools? Personal visits to the other schools in the district?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah, well.
It's supposed to be done at the end of the meeting.
I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. We'll do it at the end of the meeting. Convention and conference requests. We have one this evening. Lowell High School baseball coach, Daniel Graham, to attend the National Baseball Coaches' Convention in Uncasville, Connecticut, on Thursday, January 20th through Saturday, January 22nd, 2011. The only cost to the district is $100 for substitute teacher, which will be paid from the Lowell High School Individual School Fund. What's the wish of the committee? Move approval by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Larva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Under communications, we have a communication. Let me just read this letter. It's addressed to Dr. Scott. I would like to thank you for inviting me to your fourteenth annual salute to Lowell Veterans on November 10th, 2010. Held in the Lowell High School Courtyard, the ceremony was impressive and the effort put forward was second to none. The Air Force ROTC cadets are certainly a showpiece and without question, a true team of ambassadors for the high school as well as for the city of Lowell. Please thank the cadets for the United States flag presented to me at the ceremony. I consider it an honor. Sincerely, Stacy Height, Colonel, US Air Force, Commander, 66th Air Force Base Group. Accept the communication and place on file. I, Mr. Leahy, second by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor accepting the communication, place on file, signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Next communication, just to remind the viewing audience, the Lowell Telecommunication Channel 10 broadcast of school committee meetings, live on the first and third Wednesdays of the month, Thursdays at 6:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays at 2:00 p.m., Tuesdays at 10:00 a.m. Under professional personnel, the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby request to donate sick leave days to the following staff, Carrie Morales, teacher of Lowell High School, 16 days. Motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Larva. Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Larva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Millenazzo.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Nothing under civil service. Before we adjourn, the chair would recognize Ms. Larva for her point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, and I apologize. I had been absent from the November 17th meeting and spaced it at the last meeting, but on November 8th, I went to the Wang School for their family night, and they did a presentation on bullying, and I just thought I wanted to recognize that they had done the program, and it was a very nicely-done program. And then on November 10th, I was able to attend the Veteran Day ceremonies held at Lowell High School, the Butler School, and the Daly School. And again, programs were excellent, and I was very impressed with the way all three schools had handled their programs, and I thanked them for the invitation. And then finally, I went to the Maury Dedication on the 19th, and what an impressive school, impressive program, and just watching the kids and the way they behaved during the program was just wonderful. So thank you very much for those opportunities.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the committee? Motion adjourned by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. All in favor adjourned, signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year. Thank you so much. And talk about dedication, sitting in the cold. I know.